How's everybody doing? We got cops. Let's see how many. Let's go for a count. There's two. There's two. There. Two in that vehicle, guys. We got two. We got two cops there, guys. So... See how many? How many they bring? What kind of rights they won't violate, right? Good to see you, Lemmy. John, Joko, thanks for coming back, fellas. Again, this is what we're wondering about, we're wondering about. Are we enforcing this? No cameras, no cell phones, no video? Right? We need to know, guys. Sent an email and they told me they are gonna, so... Discretionary. No recording in the town meeting. So... What's up, Angel? Yeah, I'm looking at this, cops are right here. They're chilling, right there. They're chilling. Right here. Just watching, people watching, right? So, yeah. Eight oh one. So the cops are here. The meeting starts. I think the meeting starts at six, guys. Like to get in early. You know, but... So I think I'm gonna just, uh, for now, I'm just gonna set up right here on the corner of this. Right? I'll set up like right here on the corner. I think that's what I'm gonna do for now, so... Let's see what's going on. Best spot, it's not gonna... It's not gonna obstruct anybody's view. Our entry. And there's you guys, uh... A decent view as well. Picture now, is it there? It's a little better, I think. Thanks for being here, guys. Slash, hey, good to see you. Appreciate it, thanks for those thumbs up. Alright. People will start rolling in here shortly. I'm gonna ask these cops to their face if they're enforcing this bullshit or not. I think they got more on the way. Just saying. So... Shadow right there. Focus issue, I suppose. Just seems dark on mine. But yeah, we're right here, we're not obstructing the entrance or the exit. Everyone will be going in on that door right in front of us. People are starting to show up. Lady Justice, good to see you. They have banned the cameras since you were here last, Lady J? No cameras allowed in the town hall. No, no cell phones, no recording, and, uh, no cameras. Smash that thumb, guys. Just get those nikes up there. Appreciate it. Two so far. I'm getting ready to... I'm, uh, they're gonna come up steps in second, I'll ask. I gotta at least speak to the ranker, whoever's in charge here. Because it, uh, in the email I got, it said it's discretionary, guys. It's at the discretion of the deputy. So I need the deputy to tell me what their discretion is gonna be like when it comes to this sign. They need a second to put their stuff down, guys. Alright, so... What's up, Redz Watch, good to see you. Appreciate you guys being here. Come on, get them thumbs up there. I know you guys can do it. Let's go, let's go. Get them up, get them up. Ah, there we go, now they're going up. Bro, I've been so good.
What did they say?
No, no cameras, no cell phones, and no video.
You can't even take a cellphone there?
That's what the sign says.
Did they say that?
Uh... I got, I sent an email to the sheriff's department, and I was basically told in long and short of it, it's discretionary. Uh... And that I could be cited, uh, I could be jailed for it. So huge blow to the First Amendment here, I don't know what they think they're doing. Uh, we haven't found no case law to back this at all. We're using, uh, CRS 189117, um, which is like a time, place, and manner. So, um, that, yeah, there's not...
But I mean, like, if you brought one in your pocket, I think what, I mean, is it...
I, I think they're not smart enough to understand how the sign is put. First off, there's no CRS attached to it, so it's not legitimate.
Was it just they don't want you to present it, photograph, or videotape?
I don't know, but what it comes down to is, is how it's written. And it says, "No cell phones, no cameras, no video." So anybody who goes in there with a cellphone today is guilty. The way I see it. I mean, just as guilty as if I went in there and, and presented my screen like I always do.
I just, I just can't imagine that people can't have their phone.
It's not gonna, it's not gonna fly. We're challenging it, so, uh, I'm, I think there's a few others gonna challenge this as well. Yeah.
I'm not gonna have my cellphone out if they, you know, not... I'm an investiga- private investigator, something out here to, you know, but you guys do you, it's gonna be an interesting, I, I got a bad feeling tonight. I, I, I got a bad...
Well, last meeting, they had five cops here. They brought five cops to enforce that rule. Of course, it was selective, you know?
Were they searching people?
Some, no, but some people was able to take photos, others not, you know? It's selective around here, you know how, how that is, I'm sure you, you've, you're that far into your investigation.
Yeah.
Just, just like the state laws. The state law applies if it's in their favor, it does not if it's against them. It, this is how they operate. Two years, I've, I've just documented it over and over, I mean, nothing's changed, you know? So...
So when they walk by, did they say you can't bring that in?
I'm, I'm actually having a consultation with them here shortly, they're supposed to be coming back out, speaking with me.
Did they, did they say when they walked by you?
No, I'm fine to record out here, I'm gonna be recording out here, no problem. So...
Look, I thought they said something to you.
No, I said something to them, I told them I need to speak to them, because I need to know what their discretion is gonna be. They have to tell me, to my face, what is their discretion gonna be? Because what if you wanna record, or she wants to record, or he wants to record, that's gonna be an issue? The same as me being an issue? What if you brought a phone in, you brought a phone in, you brought a phone in, and I brought a phone in? Same thing, right? I need to know what their discretion is gonna be, because it, it, I was told it's discretionary.
Well, I think that no cell phones is an overreach, but I think they can ask, like, look, nobody, you know, I think they can ask that. I mean, I guess they can ask anything they want.
We got a Colorado, uh, Open Meetings Act that says they can't tell us, we can't record it, so, it's an open meeting. Executive session's different, but open meeting is for the public, so...
Either that or they just shut the whole thing down.
Right, they don't have an option, but...
It's just, it's just weird, I don't know.
Yeah, it's what we do, you know?
Well, I mean, it is the First Amendment, but you guys gotta do...
Yeah, if, this, this is, uh, this is them stopping free press, and they can't do that, it's a First Amendment violation. And not only that, the signs are prior restraint, because they're telling me what I'm able to broadcast before I can broadcast it. They, they've got themselves in a hell of a pickle here tonight. There's no doubt about it, and we've got quite a few people paying attention, so...
Very, very bizarre, I'll tell you that.
Well, we appreciate your help, man, you being here is, is a help.
Yeah, it's, uh... I'm here to document.
You're a witness.
But I don't think I'll be able to document.
You're, but you're a witness. Alright, guys. How's a private investigator on the scene? What's up, Devoe? Missed a little bit of chat there. I still ain't seen cops come back out. See if they're coming or not.
Got it going?
You know it. Yes, sir. Yeah, that's what they say, they say can't do it. But, here, here's a vet for you. That's a bunch of bullshit? Is that what you fought for?
Yeah. Fought for a little better condition.
Eh, you know? Oh, bro, we appreciate your service, Tom.
Okay, Tom Tiffany.
Tom Tiffany, we appreciate your service, sir.
You bet, thank you.
Yeah. Vet said anyway, he fought for. So those guys went inside, said they're gonna put their stuff down, come back out and talk to me. Ain't been back out yet. So... So far, it's only two. Uh, Fowler and Sloan. Yep.
I thought there'd be three or four.
Not yet. I seen him on the phone, I don't know what he was doing, but... They say they're coming back out? I just wanna know what's their discretion.
Driving down our street when I was getting in the truck, I saw the, I mean, I love the meeting.
Yeah.
Right now, I'll get to it, yes, maybe I'll take a ride by there then.
That's good.
Hey, man, you, you got an extra SD card? Dude, I forgot my SD, I forgot to use my cellphone, I forgot my SD card. That's alright. You know what I found, though, is it cell phones, I'm sorry to interrupt, man. Um, cell phones are like less, people freak out less.
I am live ones.
Well, they freak out more if you got a handheld.
I've never, ever, ever, ever.
But I've, I've done...
But as soon as I pull this out...
Well, the handheld's worse.
Yeah, yeah, a camcorder, like, yeah, I got buddies that do that, that way too.
Freaked out with, but with the cellphone, they're calling in?
And, and, and this is the next level, they don't even really even notice it. Body cam, nobody says nothing to me about it, so...
How many hours you get on that?
Uh, this one, uh, I got 128 gigabytes storage, and then I'd go eight to 12 hours on the battery.
What's up, TJ?
What's up, guys, so I'm just wondering about these signs, uh, I talked to Ray about it, he said you guys' discretion is, is what's gonna happen and how it's gonna happen, so...
What sign's this a picture?
This sign right on the door, uh, I'm being forced to this sign. This sign says, "No cameras, no cell phones, no video." No problem, I rather that. No problem, like, hey, I, I, I am not gonna... I'm not gonna challenge what you guys say, but I'm gonna make you say what you have to say. You understand that much, right? This reprise is still alive.
We don't understand it a little bit, right, so you guys get to record.
Not only that, not, not only that, Fowler, you understand that I'm gonna put you on the spot tonight. If we decide to record this sign, I'm gonna put you guys on the spot. Every single person, and all these vets, besides that are lucky in here to have a cellphone on them. And on top of it, we're gonna see our S attached to that sign. I do wish you guys know I feel this way, I, I respect you guys checking with the DA. These are points that I would bring up if I was you. There is no CRS attached to this, please play, um, and, uh, no cellphone? You're gonna arrest this guy? Because he's gonna go into the cellphone. Anybody that has a cellphone, it doesn't say no use of cellphone, it says no cellphone. So, being, no, I don't speak to them, I'm just saying, I'm using this example, saying to him, saying to him, saying to him.
So, yeah, let us find out. Appreciate you, man.
Alright. So let's see what happens there, guys. We're gonna see what happens, they're, they're on the phone with the DA, they need a little bit more time. So... Leroy, uh, you know, honestly, to answer that question, it's because of YouTube. You know, uh, they're pushing, uh, these vertical videos versus horizontal. If I put my video horizontal, I'd have about three people in here. It's just ridiculous. So, that, to answer your question, that is, is, is why. Sorry, guys, it's not my preference either. Is that Vern?
TJ, how you doing, man?
They in the hood, bro. They're, they're in there, uh, talking to the DA right now, see what they can figure out.
On what?
Cameras on the sign.
That's what we're talking about. If you stop, I'm gonna talk to them tomorrow. Be all time, you need.
Well, uh, I just, they're on the phone with the DA. I just made it a point to them that I, if they're enforcing the sign, they're enforcing the whole sign. So I want every single person in there with a cellphone taking it, flat out. That is how it's written, bro. Exactly. Hey, these people are crazy, bro, that's an overreach, thank you. And I told them, tell the DA, where's the CRS on there? It's not legal. You know, they're just trying to grasp. It ain't gonna work, bro.
I'm not gonna turn my back on it.
Ain't gonna work, bro. Bunch of pansies.
I agree.
You know?
Don't show our bad behavior. How dare you show our bad behavior? Yeah.
What's that? Alright, guys. Come over to the chat. Yeah, dude. I don't know, I don't know what's gonna happen there, John. Uh, you know, I'm just here to ask the tough questions. Here's, here's your powerful mayor. Can't record him, though, he's fucking, he's too famous. He'll ban the paparazzi, he don't give a fuck. It's a walking meme. Oh, shit, dude. It's a walking meme. This hilarious, guys. Where's where we're at? Signs, signs, everywhere are signs.
It's okay if I hang around here as a free citizen.
I, I don't know around these parts, Tom. Free citizens around here, they're, I think they're frowned upon.
One way or another.
Yeah.
Old Frank came to get signed in, I guess.
Yep. Yeah, Frank made it, John, Frank's here for his, uh, swearing in.
Well, I'll be a part across the street to see any action.
That's right.
I've seen a lot of fools walking in.
Yeah. Yep.
Was there ever in the service?
Hmm, I don't think any of them. I don't believe any of them were in the service. Gerald wasn't in the service, was he?
No.
No?
That one?
I don't believe Frank was, no, I don't think any of the board was in the service. No, sir? No, no, sir, uh, Bob, Bob is in service, because Bob's... Bob's a new board member, so he was in the service, Bob Romero.
Oh, yeah.
All the rest, Vern, the two new ones, Vern and Bob. Because they just got put in.
Both of those are vets.
Yeah, Bob here, he's a vet, and Vern's a vet. The rest of the board that was there, no, but now we got the new board, we got two vets there.
Yeah, let's help.
I wonder how clean they're keeping my cop car over there? Is this my buddy calling? Hey, is this my buddy calling?
I thought he's had a, a different shirt.
Oh, he's got a cellphone. He's got a cellphone in his holster there, right? Right? That's their soon-to-be new marshal. Right there, guys. You get it all around here, boy.
Are you streaming?
Oh, yeah. Of course.
Everybody has their cell phones in their hand.
Yeah. It's a challenge. They're supreme, they're supreme, they're federal, there's so much case law against this, they're stupid. They're, they're only opening themselves up for issues. And, and the cops, you know, they're trying to do their best, so that's why they're doing what they're doing, right? They're trying, these, these cops are really trying, dude, when I got here, it was rough with the cops as well. The citizens felt the cops wouldn't protect them.
Do you live around here?
Yes, I live just a block from here, basically. I'm, I moved here, got a rental just because of these assholes. I'm not from here, I don't live here, not on, okay? Now what? I've been here two years, bro, now I can run for mayor. I got, uh, yeah, I rented, yeah.
That's why I'd be...
I rented a house, yeah.
That's, uh, it's gotta be tough to do this.
And I go everywhere, yeah. And, and this, and the case law, well, the, the CRS that they're trying to use doesn't have... And this, and the case law, well, the C R S that they're trying to use doesn't have case law behind it, and there's multiple places trying to do this. It's not just one place.
Do you do First Amendment audits?
Yeah. Yeah, cop watch, First Amendment audits, government accountability, the whole list, yeah.
Were you here that night where that thing like went down with Paul and the mayor getting pushed?
Nope. I wasn't.
That was the one night you missed?
Yeah, and last night. And here's the thing.
What happened last night?
And here's the thing, listen, I'm gonna tell you exactly why, because I'm a strategic type of person.
Okay.
That was a shit show, I was not here, so them trying to equate this shit to me is not gonna work.
Was that what you think was happening?
I know that's what's happening. And they're not gonna equate it to me, bro, I was not here that night.
Yeah.
See what I'm saying?
So you weren't there that night that the, because I'm looking for witnesses that saw it, you know?
Right, no, I wasn't there.
No more people saw it.
I was not there, man.
It happened, I don't know where, I can't remember where it happened.
I hope the bitch goes to jail over it, though. They, they, you know, it's no different than there was a First Amendment order right here when that guy, Frank, did what he did to him.
I was in there, I saw there was some bumping last, when I was here last night. Do you remember?
Me and the mayor.
You got bumped, I think.
Mayor come up and bumped me, I told him, don't fucking touch me, I'll beat his ass, bro, you don't touch me, we have very strict laws here. Self-defense is, is, it's a real thing.
Is it different out here, in your opinion, than?
Than up north?
Then, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes. Yes, this is, it's way different than up north. Right.
I wonder where everybody is?
No one's coming, bro.
Really?
No one's coming.
So it is? Why?
They're scared. When they come, they get assaulted and fucking, you name it, right? So, it's kind of a, it's kind of one of them things, nobody, nobody wants to risk it. Good, how are you, Bob?
So I remember last time, he went up there to speak.
I mean, why is he not coming no more? See what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying, because it brings problems that's unneeded. He didn't need these issues. He didn't deserve them. Right, but he was being vocal, and if you show up and you say anything, this is what you're gonna receive.
So I remember when I was, oh, no, I appreciate that, when he was here, when I was here last time, you were up there for like a good fifteen minutes, there was some issue with, I think, the heat? They cut your heat off, or your gas?
Yeah, they pulled my gas.
They cut your gas off?
They didn't just shut the meter off, they pulled the meter. Thanks for being here, guys, very welcome. And then when I asked them about, uh, I gave them medical paperwork from one of my doctors, Sarah tried telling me that because they got that paperwork after the meter was pulled, that they're not gonna use that.
Right, and then everybody talked, and then the girl that talked at the end, she kinda got cut off?
Oh, yeah, Shelby? But they didn't let her, she signed in, they didn't call her up there to talk.
And so is she gonna be here tonight?
I don't think so. She's been under the weather. And then they had a meeting last week, uh, and that didn't go that well either, and they, um, they. John, you know they had that live going in, on the Facebook, guys.
If I'm in your way, let me know.
No, you're fine, bro. Aguilar, Colorado, town of Aguilar, Colorado, Facebook, will be broadcasting live inside. Because they have four that they were supposed to swear in, but he was on vacation somewhere last week, so he didn't get to come. I'm still waiting on clarification from the cops, guys. I didn't think he was gonna show up tonight, because I thought he was still gonna be gone. Because I was told it's discretionary, so I'm asking them, what is their discretion? Does that make sense? He was here before, he said he was in the fire. He was on investigation for the fire, he was on investigation for them confiscating that guy's guns that died in the fire. About two weeks before the fire, uh, a friend of mine lives not too far from here, and him and Mark Piano, um, started his trailer on fire outside of his yard, but he didn't call the sheriff.
My goodness.
So he didn't even file a report.
Are they starting at six on the dot? Do they usually start at six on the dot?
Usually at six or right, right, after six.
I heard there was gonna be protests tonight, I heard, but none of that. I heard there was gonna be a thing to do, like with people outside.
I got my bow horn and everything. Yes, sir. I'm at my camera.
So I've got DA here, Sloan on the phone.
I'm on the ambulance.
They're free to observe, uh, and then let's talk to, is it TJ Bunker?
Yeah, he's here.
Right, Henry, how you doing, brother?
Hey, TJ, I'm doing okay. Listen, uh, it's my understanding that if you are there recording, you will record from one particular area and not move around, correct?
Yeah, I mean, as courtroom rules, I can see that, okay?
Okay, yeah.
It's agreeable.
You'll set up, you'll set up, and it won't be roving around, it'll be setting up, you'll be recording.
Yes, sir, that's agreeable.
Okay, and your agreement is, is once you start the recording, unless this is a situation where there's a stop in the meeting, you'll continue the recording from beginning to end?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's, that's how I broadcast my meetings.
Okay, well, I mean, as long as it is, I mean, here's my concern, it's this whole issue of, of exciting, inciting disruption by virtue of this whole process, and, and, uh, and I don't think you want it. You want to be able to tell public your own version.
Right, I'm a watchdog, Henry, we've dealt with each other for a long time now, and.
I got you, okay?
And, and you know, I mean, really, really, I can just say, you know, as an example, when those misdemeanors were dished out, I wasn't here. I wasn't here, I wasn't broadcasting. So try to, for them, try to relate it to me directly is a problem.
Right, no, and TJ, what I'm trying to do is, I mean, effectively, there's a distinction that we're trying to draw between essentially credentialed media, and there's that whole open question about, um, social media. And until we can get some further review, if in fact you will, uh, record, and your commitment is to record from beginning to end, and I understand there's a break in the meeting, you know, and you want to shut it off so you don't waste, you know, um, digital time or whatever, okay, it's just not selectively recording the meeting. Because there's a, there's a desire not to have to the extent it's there, Zoom be different from your recording.
Well, I mean. Henry, I'm still gonna clip videos down into shorts and produce them, I mean, that's what I do. Uh, YouTube, the way the platform's set up, is you got a sixty-second clip, with Facebook, it's a thirty-second clip. Um, so, so we obviously are still gonna pull clips from the recordings, be it theirs or ours.
Right, but no, no, I hear you, I mean, all of this is gonna have to be worked out in the future, TJ, okay?
Well, let's work together. I can work with you, you know that, um, we've worked together twenty times.
I, I got you, TJ, what I'm just trying to do and say is, and you will preserve your full recording, correct? Even though you may upload different pieces.
Well, I usually, uh, livestream it, so it's broadcasted, uh, right now. So, I'm always live, when I'm dealing with government, I'm live, and I always have a body camera running. So I have multiple recordings.
Right, but there, but, but if there is a question about the accuracy of it, people can go to you and get the full, the full screen.
If there's a question about the accuracy, they can go to the town's Facebook page and look at that. They have to also broadcast from beginning.
Yeah, no, no, I got it, TJ, I'm just trying to have everybody have access to the full, whatever it is, on most sides.
Well, I'm just looking for our rights, you already know that, Henry, I go everywhere doing this, man.
I understand that there's this distinction between what is a public forum and what isn't, that, um, needs to be sorted out, TJ, and, and, uh, what I'm trying to do is just get us past today.
Okay.
Until we can just figure it all out. And so what I hear is, is you're gonna be streaming, and is your stream also recorded?
Uh, no, it's, it's put to the cloud, it's, it's not, uh, it doesn't take any digital space on my device, no.
Right, right, but I mean.
It's there, it's uploaded immediately, basically.
Right.
Uh, it's there.
Can it be retrieved from the cloud?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, that's what I meant by recorded, it is preserved.
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, you won't deny access to the city, just like they won't deny access to you on Zoom, Zoom recording.
Well, so far, uh, we have been denied access to Zoom recording, Henry, we do not have access. Only the town does, um, and as far as, uh, Cora and Florida requests, I have had zero, uh, received back, so I can't, I can't be mutual with somebody who's not mutual, no, sir.
TJ, I hear you, okay? We're gonna try and work on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
I appreciate that.
Alright, but for right now, there is a piece that is, um, is, is the live stream in its entirety is preserved somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, and the same as your body cam?
Yes, sir. And there's another gentleman here that I'd like to speak with you as well, Henry.
Yeah, well, hold on, hold on, let me just deal with you right now, TJ, okay? Alright, so, um, I'm gonna tell them, first of all, as I understand it, there is no public comment portion of this meeting.
Tonight.
Is, okay, uh, we'll have to deal with the public comment portion in the future, um, uh, but, um, what we're trying to get to is for you to set up and to record as you've identified that you're gonna be recording, okay? Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, if there is some aspect that starts to lead to disruption by virtue of the recording, which I don't think should happen.
Right.
Um, then they may shut down the recording. Oh, they mean the Sheriff's Department, not the city, uh, the town, uh, but that's because they may be interested in trying to preserve.
I can trust their discretion, that's fine.
Okay.
I, I trust, I trust their discretion.
Yeah, right, that, that's them, independent from, from the town. Okay?
Yes, sir.
But that working relationship, Deputy Flood?
Yes, sir.
Um, are you comfortable with understanding that until we can work further on it?
Absolutely, my only further question relates to the actual sign, which indicates no cellphones at all in the area, and there's no way to police that.
No, listen, the, the piece of that is going to be, um, that they need to keep their phones shut off or whatever.
Right.
Okay, because that's an issue of disruption of the meeting.
We need to change the sign, if at all possible, to reflect.
We'll, we'll deal with that in the future, but the whole point of it is, there is nothing that causes a potential disruption in the meeting. I mean, it's like in a lot of other places, including courtrooms, you, you, you're asked to turn off cellphones, in fact, you're usually told not to bring cellphones.
Right.
You're not gonna deal with that right now.
Yeah, because I can't search these people for their phones, so it's.
I, exactly, I got you.
Okay.
Does everybody understand that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, who else wants to speak?
Um, go ahead, Mike. Good evening, Mr. District Attorney, my name's Craig Smith, and I'm a private detective.
Yeah, thanks.
Hey, uh, I'm working on behalf of a law firm, we're representing someone that's accused of.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate you, guys, thank you. Yeah, right in the back corner.
I want to make sure if he needs to exit, he can.
He's with me.
Okay, so, just wait, because it looks like he needs that device, okay, so, alright, you guys are good?
Thank you. I'm gonna sit here in the back corner. We already have an hour on this one, guys, so before this meeting starts, I'm gonna end it and come right back, okay? You guys, come back in, alright?